Mayor Herndon?
Present.
Vice Mayor Monkata?
Present.
Councilmember Shemante?
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato?
Present.
And Councilmember Brolino will not be joining us tonight. Staff is present.
All right, thank you for that. Um, would you please leave this way?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Item five is a report out of closed session on item A, direction was given to staff, and on item B, we will continue into closed session at the end of tonight's meeting. Taking us to item six, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Rose, I have one thing I talked to you about earlier, and it might just be on my digital version, but some of the attachments seem...
So I am using the new program. And after I did discuss with you and reviewed it, there was a staff report that was brought to the bottom of the item rather than to the top of the item.
Okay.
And that was item C, the housing element. But the whole document's there.
Okay, so for approving this agenda, should we amend it so that the attachments for item C are kind of like...
Just be understood that it's kind of out of the...
Out of line.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? Okay?
I make a motion to approve.
Real quick, I'm going to add in a public comment. Any public comment, if you have the agenda that's been printed out, if you have anything that we'd like to question or comment before we approve the agenda for tonight? Okay, bringing it back, we have a motion from Mike for the agenda as amended. Looking for a second.
Hold on. Rose, go ahead. Shemante?
Hi.
Scherrato?
Hi.
Monkata?
Hi.
Herndon?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to public comment at item seven. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to our staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. So what we'll have you do is go up to the podium, introduce yourself. We have an assignee sheet up there, Rose. We'll get one, just in case we need to have a way to get in touch with you. If you could write your contact information on the assignee sheet, and then we'll start. You can use it for five minutes.
Okay, my name is Patricia Hartens. I want to know who's on the bridge right here, the small bridge just past the painted road. I want to know the pipe that runs along. If you look over the bridge to this side, which is, I don't know. West, maybe? Anyway, who's responsible for that pipe maintaining it? Because there is one spot that I am concerned with because of the rust. And it looks like it's really deteriorating. And so I wanted to try and find out if the city is responsible or Caltrans for that pipe so that possibly it could be checked and taken care of.
Okay, just make sure you have your contact there, and staff will get in touch with you, get any additional information, and hopefully get your question answered. Thank you. Either just like a phone number or a Gmail, whichever is...
Your phone number.
You're welcome.
I'm not good in front of people.
You're fine.
My name's Louis Leary. I've lived in Angels all my life. I have a bunch of chickens that I guess I got a complaint about. And I've been up to the city, I've asked questions. I've tried to handle this the best way I could. I've been threatened about $100 a day, per day. After the 30 days, I have no paperwork. My aunt's been called. She lives in Redwood City, that's who I'm renting from. And she's even been threatened. And the person that handled it acted like it was a terrorist threat, like he was reporting it to CNN or something. But I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how to keep the example. My son has grown up with them. He's five. And trying to explain to him that I got to get rid of him because of this. I mean, I had no idea that there was a conditional use permit for $332, you can only have three chickens. It's not, it wasn't posted. So I just, I need answers. And I'm trying my best. I went up to City Hall twice. And each time I've talked to somebody different. The guy who came to my house with somebody, City Hall with somebody else, went back up there with somebody else. I just would like to have some answers, how I could go about. But $332 for three chickens, that's outrageous. And I want to know after that, why? So that's all I have to say.
Okay, so make sure we have just your phone number or what have you, and we will definitely have staff reach out to you.
Okay.
Hopefully get your questions. So your question, Louis, is what's your amount, your quantity, your number of animals that you allow? And...
I mean, I've had them for six years. Why all of a sudden?
So I know we might have some other comments on this tonight, but real quick, if I can touch on this. It's been probably about a year and a half, not quite two years, since we have had a code enforcement plan or enforcement team in this city. It's been a long time, I don't know how long, before that's ever happened. So there has been some enforcement that's going on in the last year and a half that hasn't been. And that might be, if your question is, why has it been okay for so long? You know, for whatever length of time, and now it seems to be...
Well, I mean, I've never gotten paperwork or nothing.
Right, so you're asking for some like quantified numbers, literature, paperwork?
I'm asking, well, I'm asking for answers, I guess. I don't go on the computer.
That's fine.
Anytime I go on the computer, I have my kids go for me. And it's just little stuff. But I just, I don't understand. I live next to my parents' old house. My dad just died. Now, if I can keep three chickens there, three chickens at their nonprofit because my name's on it now, and the guy behind me wants three, but it's going to cost me over $1,000 for nine chickens.
So you need answers on your quantity and the permit fees?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get you that. Rebecca, you're good on that? And do you understand a timeline? Has there been a timeline established for when? You mentioned that there was going to be a fine.
Well, my aunt don't even have the paper yet.
Okay.
The guy said he was sending it to her, but it's all the way down in Redwood City.
Okay. All right, are they just chickens, or do you have roosters?
I got two roosters. But I know it's one's made the noise. If it's a noise complaint, those three are gone anyways because I don't even like them. And they're getting hens. Like today, I walked outside, I let the chickens out, and they, the ducks were going nuts. And I look over at my mom's house, there's two ducks standing in the yard. Well, what they are, they're cattle tails is what they are. And it's a lot easier for me being in the house next door and that one being empty with those three little cattle tails there. I know when I hear them, I get up and I go outside. But I mean, it's just, I don't understand this because I talk to all my neighbors, and my neighbors are, they're disappointed.
Are we? Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi Stents, most of you know. You know, I came tonight, I kind of started out because I talked to Louis and I felt bad. You know, I'm like, okay, and I do understand there's other situations. He's got a lot of birds and all those other things. But you know, the more I've looked into this, I've been pretty frustrated with what I found about Angels Camp zoning. First of all, when I went to the city today, they really haven't seemed to have followed any of the procedures that I was told that would be, you know, done during a complaint. And why, when it's been over a month since the initial, why hasn't he got anything? Because in the office today, I was told, oh, maybe a week or two should have been. So really, that falls back upon the city because it doesn't seem as though there's a procedure. You know, they refer him to look to his computer, and as he said, he doesn't even know to do that. He needs some help, and he's asked, and he haven't done it. And I asked the city today, who's in charge of code compliance? Well, his name is Thomas, but nobody seemed to know his last name. Okay, well, that's fine, I don't need it anyway. But he only works on Thursdays and Fridays, and I understand, as you said, you're getting along with that. But today in the office, you know, as I said, I asked someone, and they says, oh, no, he shouldn't have that. And, you know, he hasn't. And, you know, it's pretty sad because Louis is going to get rid of everything because he can't afford to get rid of, you know, to pay the city everything they want and all the penalties. He's had his birds for over five years. And I couldn't understand, but I just think that the city should be worked with. You know, come on, he backs up to nothing. I drove through there today, I didn't even know he had birds. But what I'm really most appalled about is, did you know that the City of Angels Camp for a single-family residential zoning requires every person to pay $330 for a conditional use permit, and then you're only allowed three hens? It's not even worth it. Three hens can't even produce enough eggs to feed a family. It isn't even worth having them. I was told prior to 2021, a person can have as many as they wanted. But during the COVID era, this committee voted in that you had to have a use permit, and you could only have three hens. I guess it was a good time for y'all to get something like, not all of you who weren't on here, but a good time to get something like that voted because during COVID, people weren't attending these meetings. You know? And I was also told that this conditional use information was all adopted from Sonora. But this is Angels Camp, we are not Sonora. I know that there's people in this room tonight that live in the city limits of Angels in this R1 zoning, and they have hens. How many of you have a use permit? How many of you have only your three hens? None of you. Three hens is a joke. You know, and I went on the internet, and I started looking at some of the cities. Sonoma County, you can have up to 20, depends on your plot, no permit. Why do we have a permit? Alameda, up to six, no permit. Berkeley, no number restrictions, no permit required. Brentwood, up to 24, no permit. Concord, up to 12, no permit. Fresno, up to 24, depends on where you're zoning, but there is no permit. Long Beach, up to 20, no permit. Modesto, up to 12, no permit. Napa, up to six, no permit. Sacramento, no limit on numbers, no permit required, roosters allowed. And lastly, San Francisco, up to four, no permit. You know, due to the rising cost of eggs, the grocery store, you know, a lot of people have started raising their own eggs. But only allowing three chickens per household and then asking them to pay a $332 use permit?
One minute.
Is appalling. How the city ever passed something like this is ridiculous. This is a rural community that lives off of agriculture. And by the way this is written, it seems as though you don't want anyone in the city to have poultry. What I would like for this committee to do is to look further into this issue and to try to get it changed because it's time. Should not have ever been passed. And I know a lot of you here are from agriculture and have, and you should understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha.
All right, we got to go feed stairs.
Yeah, go feed it.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you for coming. Any other public comments tonight? Seeing none for public comment. Moving on to item eight, this is our consent agenda. We have two items on consent, the minutes from the last meeting and then the treasures report for March. Anybody have any reason to pull either of those items?
I wasn't here, so...
Pull A.
Pull A.
Do we have any public comment on item B?
I don't think that item would need to be...
We can table it.
Yeah.
Item A.
Yeah.
So we're not just pulling it, we're continuing item A, sorry.
Oh, right.
Continuing item A, item B, any public comment on our treasures report? Seeing no public comments, looking for a motion to pass item B. We have a motion, I'll second the motion. Rose? Shemante?
Hi.
Scherrato?
Hi.
Monkata?
Hi.
Herndon?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Our regular agenda, item nine, we have the Utica Park update. Amy Augustin.
Mayor and council members, and I'll ask the city clerk to go to page 19. So wanted to update you on the timeline based upon our meeting this morning. We are looking at potentially starting work end of May, early June, with a groundbreaking sometime potentially between May 20th and June 5th. Here is the layout that we are working on, and it's not exactly the way it's going to be laid out, but it's conceptually where everything is supposed to go. This was presented to the park subcommittee on Friday, and they recommended approval with moving the stage slightly as far north as we can contract it. The idea on this plan is to basically have the park staying on, for convenience sake, I'm going to call it up north and down south. To stay on the north above the roadway and to have the roadway come across the bottom, and parking would be all on that side. And then there would be like grass and stuff underneath the stage area. So basically, you'd have your park coming all the way across the top. And then on the expansion parcel, you would also have the park horse trail, you would have the hard court, which would either be that direction or turn 90 degrees. The park horse is over by the pavilion. And the concept now is to have the pavilion and then have mini pavilions, if you will, so that they can do more of a rehab potentially on the existing pavilion. And then instead of having an L-shaped, as we'd originally envisioned, having smaller ones in different locations in the park in order to have other places that people could use if the main pavilion was already being rented by somebody. One of the reasons for where that stage is and not in the pit where it was originally proposed, one of the reasons is you have, you're supposed to do north-south on the stage for lighting purposes. And down in the pit, there was an issue of accessibility, an issue of cost because you'd have to take out some of the fill and put an engineered fill instead. And drainage, the very, very bottom, there is a concrete structure which provides some of the drainage for the site. So the subcommittee liked this. They thought it was nice to have the stage up near where everything else was happening, especially near the pavilion, so that if people had events, they can sort of use the whole thing. We talked about some things like lighting and stuff, which I won't go into now. But the playground is where the committee had always recommended that it go. And the round circle is where the gym would go. And we are asking for your input on the layout. And then I'll stop right there, and then I'll finish the rest of my report after we've had a chance to ask questions and comments.
Talk a little bit about parking and the fact that that bump is going to be taken out and the fact that, you know, the protection first, the children playing in the park with that.
So it's either, if I come over here, sorry about that. So basically, this bump's going to come out so that it will be more accessible for fire engines and stuff to get in here. This will actually be more like here so that you can still turn around. And this would be more like you see here with the grassy area and stuff coming across this direction. Here, this will be fenced, and then there's going to be a drainage that comes here. So basically, one of the concerns that had been discussed was what happens if somebody accidentally drives forward and there's kids playing there? Well, there's going to be a drainage swale and then a fence on the inside of the drainage swale so you, it can't drive into it, you can't down into a drainage area. Can I see?
Yeah.
Were there any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
One of the meetings, we talked about shade over the play structures, the children's play structure?
Yes.
So did we?
Yeah, they have shade already in them, all the equipment that was picked out.
And then it addresses, of course, landscaping and shade throughout as permitted or as allowed, right?
Yes, and I'll get a little bit more into that with the rest part.
Okay, explain your Bocchi Court adult one and two, is that the rest of your court?
So you mean...
No, you have adult one for, I didn't understand what you're going... Hard court will not be located up here, potentially up picnic.
Okay, it's not going to, it's not going to be here. It's going to be down here.
Okay.
Because this have an accessibility issue for people. And since it's the only hard court we're going to have, you have to make it accessible when it's your only one. So what we're likely to do is put more park horse stations and a picnic area up on that flat park.
And that's in the expansion area? That's kind of around?
Yeah, so basically, right now, your line comes like this. Whoops, excuse me, that's not mine. So it goes sort of like this. So this is all in expansion.
Question? Yeah, okay, so as far as in the expansion area, what kind of fencing or perimeter deterrents are we going to do? Or is there, between private property and the park property?
So...
So people know where that stop point is.
Okay, we are not proposing any. This is a share clip that goes straight up.
Okay.
So we were not proposing anything. We have worked with that property owner, and she has passed instead, has only ever explained. Otherwise, we are adjacent to vacant property there.
Okay.
So there is some fencing that will likely occur around at least one of the line shafts. The one up near the highway with the deep one. But the main fencing is going to be more around the children's play area, so that is not a problem with kids. And around the hard court so that your basketballs and pickleballs and all that.
And what is the material, what is, is this sod in this area around, yeah, in between?
So what we're going to do is walk the site with a natural landscape architect because there are some soil issues here. So anywhere we plant something is probably going to have to be, this is likely to be more like clusters of trees because we definitely saw it will break.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what kind of edging are you guys, have they recommended? Or have you even talked to the architect about that yet?
Edging for...
Would you do edging around any, all the landscaping?
We have not gotten to that level of detail. There is a concrete filler around all of the playground area because that's corded and placed rubberized as well as chips. So there's a combination of that.
And are there any cross trails that are going around with these tracks?
I suspect we will have cross trails.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the main trails, but we do expect to have some cross trails.
For the Bocchi bone courts, those were part of the grant, correct?
Yes, they are.
And then what is going to, I mean, this is really far out, but what's going to be our plan to maintain those? Just because they do require maintenance, they're not...
Same as the maintenance plan for the rest of the park, yeah. Yeah, we do anticipate those may be covered, actually. Sort of like the ones in coin hard court, I think.
Oh, yeah.
And then they actually built those.
Is it possible, if I walks by the park where we have the signage, would it be possible to add some type of QR code to that? Because I feel like when you're walking by both there and then on the lower end, there's nothing there. And I feel like something leading people through the group, walking by or pulling out, might be beneficial.
What we were kind of thinking is, once we had a, like a conceptual design, ours, to have that actually replace the one that's up there. We would still keep the required language on there in terms of the funding, but we would have an updated conceptual plan because it's clearly different than the grand conceptual plan. And then, yeah, we can put a QR code. Thank you.
And the committee unanimously approves the plans?
Committee unanimously recommend approval.
So there's just one pickleball court? Is it just a pickleball court or is it like a basketball court?
No, it's an multi-use hard court.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it was played in the... So basketball and... And whatever else you want, hardcore. Yeah. And I know people who live nearby, like, well, yeah, for reasons of noise. I don't know if you've heard, but pickleball is not...
It is?
It is.
It's very loud.
Things such as solid wood, I think, and a harder ball. So it's not, it's louder than tennis.
And then all the memorials that are going to be moved, that's going to come into fruition as the, we know more about the solidifying of this, right? Okay.
Yeah, we've been in pretty close contact. In fact, I met with the veterans memorial person in person today. She handed me her entire file of the original place it was, the original design it had, the original location that it was, but since that's not the original location. And we'd already talked to the person with the fountain, and the tree's not going anywhere.
So all of the brown is...
It's conceptual, yes.
I know, but what, I guess, what are the difference in the tree? The one's grass and one's...
So, okay, so the idea is, in here, is for accessibility. So it will be probably something walkable and harder.
Yes.
Same with this, and then this will likely be solid. But in terms of the details on the other servicing, and this would be a different type of servicing also. Because they want to make it as accessible as possible.
We had talked many, many months ago, of course, budget depending, we might have wanted some sort of, as an option for a splashed path or whatever. Budget depending.
But that would have to come from an alternative funding source.
I understand the budget side of it, but what about location? Could there be an area pinpointed for that? Or would there be?
We are, we actually were looking to get through the design for this, to get it moving forward as fast as possible, and then talk about stuff like that after we saw what the budget was going to be. Because if we ask them to design it, it would be coming out of this.
Yeah, no, gotcha, okay. I just see green, and I think, well, we could put something there, or there, or there. But I don't know, is green grass, would green have water hookups, that type of green?
Yeah, and people are fairly possessive of this green space. They see it as an event area, a place where you hang out. I was surprised, they're very sort of...
Where it's open now?
Yes. And then the little hole out, it's still shown here, but that would go away.
Yeah.
What was that shown for?
That is where some utilities are. Yeah, so we would need the utilities, and so that would make that turn, because you know when it gets busy around there, that...
It's a pinch lane.
So you still have to designate, you got parking too, though, correct? So there's access and et cetera from that point.
Are we losing parking down there, or is it about the same or gaining?
It's going to be about the same, except that, of course, we will be expanding parking here.
And the upper side with this, yeah, with the...
Leasing potential.
Yeah, with contrants and the sidewalk and then... Thank you.
So you still have more, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So with landscaping, we were contacted by PDNE today, begging us to donate trees, whatever kind we want, five and 15 gallon. And we said, ah, yes, of course. So each of you will be partnering with us.
For real car?
Landscaping will also be, as I mentioned, walking the site with a landscape planner, actually two of them, to give us some recommendations about where would be best to plant what, so that we can have that kind of guidance.
Are these architects from up here?
Yes.
Great.
Both of them are. Um, Mark Wayne, um, probably before we meet with you again, um, will be moved to the museum. While he is undergoing rehabilitation. It will be open to the public. They'll be able to watch it, uh, the statue being rehabilitated. Martin has basically tendered the lease that it'll either be just inside the carriage house or just outside the carriage house. And the people who are doing the rehabilitation, they do it professionally. They're they're tickled with the idea that they think it'd be great to have people be able to watch them go through the restoration. We will be adding the frogs back.
Yeah.
And is there some way we can get that word out?
No, yes.
Before people see him gone.
We're gonna be putting a press release out in advance of anyone touching him or moving him. Um, so I'm gonna send it out to all the press.
Perfect.
I would like.
Or maybe a sign in that spot saying temporarily.
Anthony, Anthony. Um, we'll put social media release, website release, um, just releases in every single Friday.
Temporarily.
I'll try to get DJ Hanson to say something about it. Um, yes, we need to do significant.
Putting up the fish.
And our and our eagle has decided or our bird has decided.
Our birds have decided that they need it at three bedroom, not a two bedroom.
Okay.
So they can relocate.
Um, what have your efforts been in your success with any of the outreach for the memorial trees, benches and brims and things like that?
We're still at, um, five, six. Um, and I say five slash six because foothill village actually sent us through their representative. Um, many of their residents are very interested. So I expect several from foothill village who will be.
Okay. Other type of outreach?
Welcome, excuse me.
What type of outreach have you done? Did you reach out to the fairgrounds or anything on the brands or to the local cattleman's?
Have not had time to do that yet. No, we've been focused on getting this pushed out and doing our special meeting and getting it approved. And, um, we would like your direction on this site plan because once you do that, we will then establish the costs. And start spitting out plans for building.
And then we did, uh, have a meeting this morning. We did ask them to price out. Um, so as part of the geotechnical report, they talked about the open mine shafts. One of them, it's just not feasible to cap it. So it would be fenced. The other ones, they recommend capping it, but we asked for pricing to cap and fence. Um, so we know what those costs are gonna be. So we would bring that forward to council so you know what the cost of either one is. Um, fencing obviously would be, there would be ongoing maintenance. If opposed to capping would be one and done.
And when you're talking fencing, are you talking the large construction fencing?
No, this is permanent fencing.
Okay, something that we would like to.
Yeah, and we talked extensively about the one that would be visible from the highway. And we're talking more along the lines of wrought iron type of an idea. As opposed to maybe if we went fencing somewhere else, but that one is so visible right up there.
Okay, well, let's see if we have any public comment on the concept conceptual design in front of us. Come on up.
Just one quick question.
Okay, we've got time.
We're in another, another good day. Amy.
We need to walk all the way up there for that.
Amy, I just have one question. Pickleball needs a net.
Yes.
Basketball does not.
Right.
Who's gonna be in charge of the netting?
So.
To maintain it. Because you know basketball players, they'll just unhook it and close it.
Yeah, um, we're gonna take some cues from the way they did it in Oakdale. They found a solution and I don't know what it was. I think they lock it in a little storage facility and you have to come and get the key. That's probably.
And so you have to return it then too?
Yes, exactly, and you know who took it.
Okay, that's all. Just a quick.
Do you have any questions? Dee, good. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, any final comments or direction to Amy on this design?
I just wanna thank you, Amy, for your work and and you took the cue from our last council meeting. And you called the committee together. I appreciated their work on this and, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve so we can move forward with the project. As long as we talk about Mark Wayne.
And and I cherish what Mike said. Thank you, Amy, for your effort on this. It's finally coming to fruition. Hopefully it stops raining and snowing and we can get boots on the ground and make it happen. Thank you. So I'd like to second that motion. Uh, so no motion, I guess, just directions. Well, to approve.
Yeah, to approve.
To approve the design.
So we got a motion in a second. Shemante?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Okay, item B, this is a public hearing. It's our second reading to consider adopting ordinance five three nine eliminating chapter seventeen point three four. And incorporating permitted and conditional uses for the business attraction and expanding, I'm sorry, expansion zoning district into chapter seventeen point three seven. Business attraction and expansion. And then amending seventeen point three seven zero eight zero eight two A to correct a typo. To clarify that barbed wire and razor wire shall not be visible from public right of ways. Amy.
Mayor and council member, again, to refresh your memory, this is for the business attraction and expansion district only. To make it consistent with all the other zoning districts that we have to be in the same format. And to correct a typo where we accidentally said that we want to razor wire and barbed wire visible from the highway. And we redo them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is the second reading.
The only question I have, Amy, is how long is a conditional use permit or administrative use permit? Is it a one year or is it for five years?
It goes with the property?
It goes, stays with the property and it transfers with the function.
It transfers with the function.
So it's just a one time fee?
One time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any public comment on this? Do we have anyone on? We do have some people online tonight. No questions online, huh, Rose?
No.
Okay, so bringing it back, we'll close the public hearing. And this is our second reading, so we're looking for a motion to adopt this modification.
Okay. So.
I'll second the motion in a second. Right, Shemante?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, um, acknowledge the completion of the City of Angels Housing Element Annual Report. Uh, this is our twenty twenty-three annual report, Amy.
Mayor and council members, as I tell you every single year at this time, you know it's spring because I am giving you your annual housing element report. Which is required by the state of California. If you want to receive certain funding, including community development block grants, um, a lot of federal grants. They require that you have a certified housing element. And part of that requires that we do this once a year. Um, that is really the reason we're here right now. Um, there's not a lot to report, other than we made, um, big strides in terms of finally getting our zoning done on all of our parcels. So that they can be developed. And of course, moving forward with Haptap for Humanity. And that's pretty much it, other than I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Oh, I don't.
I always look at you, Mike. I have no questions, comments. Does anybody need anything? Okay, any public comment on our housing element report? Okay, seeing none. We don't need to act on this. This is just acknowledgement of the report. Okay, we're acknowledging, thank you. Item D, this is to approve resolution twenty-three dash three five. Authorizing the city administrator to apply for the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Planning and Development Preservation and Reinvestment Initiative. For community enhancement price grants. Benefiting manufactured housing, manufacturing housing communities and Amy, I'll just go there.
Mayor and council members, some of you were probably surprised to learn that we had three mobile home parks in the city.
I know two. I know two, but that third was.
Two, and those of us who work at city hall know that there's a third, just as we come out of the driveway, straight across. Um, which I was surprised to learn was from the, for only four units, but it is there. Um, some of the problems we have with our existing mobile home parks is some of the mobile homes are older than nineteen seventy-six. And HUD and everybody desperately, those are what people call mobile homes. And now the big thing is you go into manufactured housing. And they want to get those mobile homes out, those manufactured homes in. So we actually did meet with, um, Big Horn and talk to them for a while about some of the things they needed. We talked to our public works guys and asked if there was anything they needed in any of our mobile home parks. And lo and behold, the answer was yes, yes, and yes. This is a federal funding source. They don't give a lot of these out, but heck, um, as Rebecca likes to say, they can only say no if you've applied. Um, we are recommending that we do apply for this to get some monies to do things like fixing the, um, water sewer pipes that go across, um, the creek. And get flooded out and things like that down with the one that's down, you know, Cherokee Creek. Um, and do a lot of replacement, uh, if at all possible, as well as resurfacing some of the roadways, anything else we can think of. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, um, do we get additional points because we're rural or our economic index is lower or, you know, the average?
This sore point after our resilient center grant.
I know.
You're supposed to. Um, we do not bear as well as some of those more populated areas in the valley. Because they meet two, um, low income criteria that we're not even considered in. We only meet one, the only one that we're considered under. Um, so, yes, they sort of automatically consider a lot of the mobile home, um, communities. Do we need more in the way of affordable housing? So that's in our favor. Um, one of ours is partially in a flood zone. That's in our favor, so. Um, and one tenth of the housing units in the City of Angels is a modular.
You say one tenth?
One in.
So these are all, and they're all inspected annually, I think, by the the Department of Housing?
Yeah, we don't even permit them. We just, um, the city, they they come in, they get a permit to move it onsite and we do all the site work. Um, but the install is basically, it's a transportation permit. They bring it in.
So if they were to be inspected and if there was repairs needed or mandated, this funding source would be available?
Yeah, you can repair, you can replace, you can restore.
Good.
So you can do any of those three. So even some of the modules. And, you know, we took a drive, it was, the day was snowing. One of the days it was snowing and it was like, I hope that thing stays standing there, two of them. And it's amazing, some of the issues that have come up. Single wides are being moved out and everybody wants a double wide moved in. So they're actually letting some people in RVs, the more modern RVs, use the single wides for permanent housing. So they just hook up to the sewer.
So Amy, who would administer these funding that would receive it?
Um, the city, the city would administer it. You can include some funds for doing that.
There's some admin fees.
There are some admin fees and you can hire a consultant to help do some administration.
And then if, I should say, when the city has granted these dollars, um, there'd be a process by which people could apply the funding?
Yes, and that is gonna be part of the outreach and is, it would be a competitive, probably a grant type program, I would think.
Do we have any modular mobile homes on private or only in these three?
Oh, I'm sure there's.
We have modular.
I'm sure there are modular.
Modular, yes, those are fairly recent and most of those are on permanent foundations.
Um, but what about, that would, that would be contenders for this?
You know, I I've been intending to cruise around at lunchtime and see if I can find any, but I, I I can't off the top of my head think of some outside. There might be a couple in the north eastern part of town. I can't think of any.
Okay. Okay, public comment on the setup? Seeing no public comment, um, bringing it back, we are looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash three five.
I make a motion to approve, and I also want to commend the city. For the short time I've sat on this council, I am amazed by the amount of dollars and time that we spend trying to better our city. And I I appreciate your staff and you, Rebecca, for going for every dollar that we can, we've come for. And, uh, and so I I make a motion to approve and I I just hope and wish the best for us.
Bless. I'll second. Want you in, thank you. Shemante?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, item B is discussion and direction on slate circle lighting upgrade. Chris O'Flynn, please. He can't get enough of us now.
Yeah. Good evening. So basically, I want to discuss the lighting up on Slate Circle. Uh, we've had some recent outages up there with the lights and we've had electricians look at it. Uh, basically, they're old and we can't get parts for them anymore. So I would like to get direction on replacing them with LEDs. And, uh, that's pretty much it. And we may have some funding possibly, um, to cover the costs, but I'm I'm not sure yet on that. But anyways, I'd like to move forward with trying to get those replaced.
So I have a couple of questions for you, Chris.
Sure.
You say nine? Hold on, where am I at? There's nine lights?
Yes, nine.
And I guess I I had pulled up a map earlier to kind of get an idea how you, there's a circle there and then the parking lot goes back.
Correct.
Is it just within the circle or does it go back a little bit?
It goes back to a little ways, yes.
And have we, do we know if, I know they're gonna be brighter. So have we done a notification to the residents or the property?
No, not, not yet.
Would we be doing that?
Yes, we could do that.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna shine in bedrooms and we're gonna get a bunch of calls that.
I don't think they're gonna be a ton brighter than what's there, but they will be brighter.
Well, you say that they're not, they're not all functional at this time.
Right now, no, they're not all functional.
So just by nature of them all functioning, it'll be brighter?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we do some public outreach to make sure that they know, um, that we're, this is, this is a great effort. I think it's a wonderful effort and I think it has a safety component because it gets dark up there. Parking, um, is always kind of sketchy maybe to to be up there by yourself at night. So I definitely see the intent and the purpose. I just want to make sure that we make everybody aware.
Yes.
As much as it's great for walking from the businesses, I think there's some residents up there too.
Yes.
So I know Rebecca, you were looking at CPPA mini grants and I think this would be a great candidate for that.
Yep, so, um, subsequent to to us working through this staff report. Michelle was working on CPPA grant for some other projects. And I said, hey, what about, what about this? So she contacted Emily Don Dero. It sounds like it all aligned just right. Um, and then we're gonna take a look at our other lights, lighting that we have throughout the city to try to bundle that up. To see if we can get, get that done as well. It's kind of remarkable, so the, because only two of the lights were functioning, we haven't actually been paying that much in electricity. But if all nine of them were actually working, um, we would have been paying forty, three hundred dollars per year just for the slate circle lights. Um, and swapping them out to LED, I think it ends up being about, um, fourteen hundred dollars a year. So it's a pretty significant, um, savings. So we're gonna go through all the other lights that we have and see if there's other, um, programs that we can, we can swap them out. But, yep.
Okay, uh, public comment on this matter? Or have any public comments?
No, I'm just gonna say, can you tell the audience what CPPA is? Because remember, we got.
Well, we're, we're power authority. That's, we're first, first preference along with Tuolumne County when Maloney's was put in. Uh, the federal government allocated, I think, twenty-five kilowatts or some, some amount to both counties. And so all the public agencies in Tuolumne County and Calaveras County, uh, receive a reduced rate. Right now, our kilowatt is probably fourteen cents a kilowatt and PG&E is like over thirty. So we see a substantial savings every year being a part of this JPA. And, um, it's been in formation since the mid eighties, but it came about through federal legislation when the dam was built and authorized in the sixties. but it came about through federal legislation when the dam was built and authorized in the sixties.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to get some direction to staff and.
There's a motion and yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is all needs to be.
I want to make the motion. Go forward with replacing these lights with LED.
Then I'm gonna send her a motion for the record. Shemante?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Juancara?
Aye.
Hernan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F is approve Resolution 24-37 authorizing participation in and approving the amended joint powers agreement of Calaveras County Fire and approving the member agency representative and alternate, Rebecca.
Um, so this is a JPA that was formed probably in twenty nineteen. So the fire districts, so there's nine fire districts in the City of Angels that provide fire services throughout the county. And um the fire districts were struggling to identify funding. So what they did is they formed a JPA for a couple of reasons. One was to try to come together to appeal to the Board of Supervisors at the county to reallocate the Prop 172 funds that had been going fully to the Sheriff's Department to be split among the Sheriff's Department and the nine fire districts. It was also to appeal to the Board of Supervisors to reallocate a portion of their transient occupancy tax to the nine um fire districts. And then it was to form some mutual aid agreements among the agencies. So at the time, the city didn't feel that it was necessary to join that JPA because um we can still work through mutual, mutual aid agreements among each other, but we get our own Prop 172 funds and we have our own TOT, so we don't have any reliance on the Board of Supervisors with the county for any of those funding sources. So fast forward, Measure A, Measure A was written, that it's this JPA that identifies the policy, the approval of any of the um uh budgets that get brought forward. It's this JPA that is going to approve reallocation of ferryover money. Um, it's this JPA that basically is going to determine the move forward or how Measure A is gonna be used um under the terms of the ordinance that was adopted. So at that point, I think it's important that we at least have a seat at the table um as part of that JPA to make sure that we're a part of those conversations as it pertains to Measure A. Again, Measure A, um, the success of Measure A is completely dependent on what happens in November. But I I do think that it's important that we at least have a seat at the table and that our voice can be heard as part of those conversations. And so um we're just recommending um that you authorize us to state in that JPA um, which we would take to the, the JPA to amend that um joint powers agreement and then appointing a representative and an alternative, which is what's required under the policy bylaws. So the recommendation is to appoint the city's finance director and then as the primary and then the city administrator is an alternate.
So I only have one question, and that was, we had briefly discussed this in our subcommittee meeting and I was under the impression we were gonna have our finance committee member as well as a council member. And that was decided to not be the case. Was I wrong on that currently? Well, we kind of briefly talked about it. So having a council member sit on that, on this board, on the JPA board with a staff member.
I don't know why that would.
Well, speaking of you, you said that there's no um statutory provision, but you would not recommend it necessarily because of the disparity between the other members have actually working public safety folks on the.
That's what my question is, is who are the other appointed members from the other agencies?
Well, I think as long as, I'm the general counsel for the South San Joaquin County Fire Authority. Just want to make sure, because in small areas, you have people working for multiple agencies. Why don't you have somebody who just works for one agency?
To do that. And then the gentleman saying another consideration, as they've talked about, was the um council members not really being fully up to speed on all the public safety issues that are.
Yeah, lots of policy.
That's a policy. So um.
Are the other agencies represented, are they sending someone from the administration of those agencies?
Their chief or their board.
And our chief can't do it because he represents multiple agencies. So Nathan couldn't do it because he's, or we just, or we want to keep it with administration?
Doug suggests maybe Scott might know that's a public safety.
Rose Mute said that it's.
Or Rebecca.
And one of their board members are attending.
Oh, got it.
But there's only one vote at the table.
So what is, the other person's an alternate or they're just there for education purposes?
They're just an alternate.
Well, Rose, in to that point, so what the recommendation was you and Michelle?
It was Michelle is the primary.
Two staff.
And then they had me as the alternate. So I would say Michelle is the primary and then you guys pick what the other person.
And how often, well, here we go. How often will they meet?
Every month. Every other month.
And is it during the?
Last Wednesday of the month, a day.
And it's here.
But shouldn't it be?
Now, it's actually.
It's here.
The fire station?
I think it's here.
No, that's what it said.
That's what it said.
It does say. It says that. For some reason, it was moved at one point in time.
So it's in San Andreas.
I don't know if it's true or not, but it has been meeting for what, the last few years in San Andreas? Do you anticipate them meeting more frequently, given the changes that are going on? On the subcommittee, we do have a seat if we join on the subcommittee. Uh, so I've requested that they consider angels. Uh, and that, that has been meeting like via Zoom and then tomorrow we're going to the county auditor's office to meet in person. But that may not continue on as frequent. I think it's right now, a lot of districts have questions. Um, and they're trying to, the auditor didn't want to meet with every district. She wanted to be a small.
You want it to be a date day and have your husband go with you? Um, Nathan's online. I don't know if it, like, I don't, I I just feel like if we send you, we're not part of safety, like, we're not doing a fire. That just seems like we're um not representing ourselves very well. Like, I feel like we need to have someone who knows fire talk.
So we're, yeah, so the, the difference is, it was originally formed, sorry, I didn't even pronounce the name. It was originally formed for a fire services JPA. That was the original intent of it. Our reason for participating in it really only has to do with Measure A, which is my needs.
And continuing to accommodate, it's going to be that way.
And it will continue to only be that way. So that fire services JPA, they need collectively nine of them saying, hey, there's this void in X, Y, and Z that impacts how, what, how they operate, but it doesn't necessarily have an impact, impact on how the city.
So it has nothing to do with mutual aid or like?
There may be conversations in that, but those would be agendized and those would be, you know, where we need to talk about, do we need to have, you know, someone there, not necessarily as a voting member, but as a, as a.
But it's, it sounds like it has more of a financial.
For us, yes.
And even for the JPA itself, when you read, when you read their bylaws, a lot of it is how to allocate the TOT tax and and things. So I.
Well, I feel like having Michelle there is a no brainer. It's just that second component.
I don't know if, I don't, is your sense, Michelle, that they, they talk about safety issues or is it more monet?
More like the departments are updating what's going on and.
In their departments.
Sharing.
Okay.
After that conversation. What was it? A training on some new software in the county. So it's very broad. It seems like the topics are, they did mention that they were excited to bring somebody in with financial knowledge, all of them.
Sure.
Well, of course. So I guess I have, I have one question. We've never been part of this JPA because we never felt that we needed to. Prop, uh, Measure A came along and that's changed this, but Measure A may be getting challenged potentially by, by this legislature.
Correct.
So should we hold up until we know the status?
No, because in the meantime, they're gonna continue to move forward as though it is happening. So they will be, they will be getting a budget. They will be approving budget.
So we're making decisions for the.
Recommendations. So we, we don't want to exclude ourselves from that.
We want to have a flex.
You can always change.
We can always back out if something.
If it's, if it ends up getting rescinded, then absolutely, then I, I would come back and say, I don't really know if there, if it makes sense for us to do further.
And that's okay. The getting off the JPA is not insurmountable effort. Okay.
Um, the, the other thing is, and um, this was why it was important. Um, when it was adopted, I immediately reached out to Dana to get Michelle or myself on these phone calls and meetings is when, when the city, um, when the city adopted the sales tax increase, um, you have to do a contract with the, it's not the state where the utilization anymore, but it's the CDTFA. And you have to pay upfront for the administrative costs of doing that. And so our, our sales tax was point five, right? That was, that was the special tax. Our administrative cost that we had to pay was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars upfront before a single dollar was collected. It's silent in the ordinance and it's silent in, I've, no one has thought about where's that money gonna come from and who's gonna pay it? That's the other piece of this that I want to make sure that we don't just receive a bill. Um, that, that we have, we're part of that conversation because that, that's been completely silent. There's also a lot of discussion right now on the JPA about the dam limit. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is affecting all, is it gonna be each district? Or can the county take that on? So they're gonna be seeking advice and um looking into that. So it's important to be at the table. And all of those have a distinct financial implication on us.
Well, the dam limit's gonna affect a lot of people.
Yeah.
Do we have an additional public comment on this?
Sam?
Sam, what's your comment?
If you don't mind, someone out of district.
No, you are a taxpayer. You're here at all these meetings. We know it all.
Well, I don't know it all. I'm a board member, Secretary of Fire, Calaveras Fire, Community Protection District in Mount Ridge.
Okay.
Covered Mount Ridge, where we fight, flinckle, and we contract to take care of sheep ranch. Uh, I have been following Measure A for a long time and a strong supporter of it. There's been one person in Valley Springs who is a retired battalion chief from Tracy who's been strongly against it.
Okay.
And after Measure A passed, there is, uh, he's been involved in another group who is basically trying to do a statewide uh petition uh to be on the ballot in November to uh limit any kind of taxes to a two-thirds majority vote.
That's right.
Yeah.
But this is not a statewide tax. It is for local municipalities and or fire districts. There's a variation here. Okay. But there'll be a lot of people go, oh, well, I don't, my taxes go up and it'll tend to kill us. Anyway, back to Measure A. Um, I would strongly recommend for the City of Angels to join the JPA. It's not gonna hurt you. Okay. It's good to have the petition, participation like uh Michelle in it. Okay. It's a strong group. And in addition to the Fire Chiefs Association, this is another fire organization within Calaveras County trying to do good for the county fire. Okay. Now, how Measure A is gonna be parceled out, that's still in limbo. The auditor's office has been very reluctant to talk to the JPA uh in any kind of details. And we know at this point is uh the state will start collecting the one, one sales tax start on October. And when it's gonna be distributed, our best guess is probably, guess, is probably uh uh third quarter of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay. And the dollar amounts of each uh fire protection district and possibly uh City of Angels will be at his, giving, is based on um previous uh situations where a one percent sales tax, they know pretty much right that it's gonna be in the. So it's, the, the numbers are pretty much there. But the majority of it is to be used for salaries. Okay. We're not gonna walk by beautiful new fire engines as much as we'd love to, but it's for salaries and for uh doing the upgrades of the fire departments that really need it. Okay. As far as JPAs or as far as mutual aid, we've already always had contracts, interagency contracts uh within this county and also going to other counties for mutual aid support. If McCullough and Hill has a fire, we're right there with them, or San Andreas, or West Point, or Murphys, whoever. Okay. And I know Angels has rediscayed it also. That's, that's part of the fire service. So anyway, I, I would highly recommend that you join the JPA. Uh, it's not an onerous organization that meets every other month. And once this Measure A finally gets settled out and we are successful in turning back this new movement. You know, I understand, you know, general tax raises, okay, yes, two-thirds majority is wonderful.
One minute.
Okay. But I think for the, the local district taxes within the county, this one is, it should go through. So we're not trying to get rich. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your insight. Any other public comment? Anybody online? Okay, bringing it back, um, I just have a question. Councilmember Shemante, what's your level of comfort? You've done a lot of research on Measure A. I feel like our contribution or our seat at that table will be relative to Measure A. How comfortable would you be being?
You know, I, I would be, and I'd be fine with knowing it. I know my only thought is, could we start with Rebecca and Michelle? And if we, if we sense, I, I'm, what is my comfort level? I'd be more than happy to serve. But if we see there's more of a fire kind of thing that's being taken care of, I guess there may be a point, a block person, you know.
I agree.
Yeah, no, and I think having Michelle there as the lead is, is gonna be in our best interest. And then I think we should just kind of go from there and um.
Because we don't know what's gonna happen in November either.
No, no. And, and I, you know, I, I just don't know what the topics are gonna be. If it's about Measure A and money and allocation and things like that. Yeah.
I would say honestly, probably for the next, um, I don't know, six months, it's all gonna be based on the policies associated with setting up the different budgets and who's doing what and where the allocations are gonna come from and where, it's gonna be all the inner workings related to finance. And um, I'm, I, I think at this point in the foreseeable future, Michelle is gonna be able to make every single one of those meetings that would be, you know, just.
So we only send one person and the other person's an alternate? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, and with the caveat, though, if we notice, Michelle, that it's turning away from finance and more to fire, then you can come back to us and, and report that.
Okay. So we just need, so it sounds like the.
I'll make the motion.
Director for.
I will make the motion for, to join the JPA. You need a three-part, I need. I'll make the motion to, to approve Resolution 24-37. And then, uh, which joins the JPA and then appointing a member agency representative of Michelle as our primary and then an alternate for if and when that time.
I thought we just said it was gonna be Rebecca.
I thought it was gonna be Rebecca.
It's Rebecca.
So I made my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I was, well, I
Because it's all administrative right now.
Right.
I made, I made a motion. Looking for a second.
Okay. Second.
Thank you, Mike. Rose.
Shemente.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. So moving on to, uh, item G, this is to approve resolution twenty-four dash three six, awarding the contract for Booster Way project to our Sutton Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-nine thousand five seventy-five and designate the city administrator to execute the contract. Rebecca.
Uh, so this is the Booster Way project, um, that we originally contemplated and a much bigger, uh, project, which was the, uh, critical water and wastewater infrastructure project that we applied for Heather Mitty from being from the twenty nineteen winter storms and we're still going back and forth on that. And in the meantime, we really need to get this going because this is a bottleneck project for the Habitat community project. So, um, we got the design done, um, we came to city council to ask, um, to go out for an RFP that was on February twentieth. Um, we put that out for bid, uh, we, um, used public purchase, our, um, city website across, um, various social media. We received, uh, the release notified, um, a little over forty-three hundred potential vendors nationwide, a hundred and thirteen vendors accessed the RFP, seventy downloaded the required documents. A pre-bid meeting was held on March fourteenth onsite where a total of seven vendors attended. And out of the seven, we received three sealed bids on August April fourth. Um, myself and, uh, David Richards, our city engineer, went through the packets, verified that they met the, uh, the requirements and our Sutton Enterprises LLC at six thirty-nine, um.
Six seventy-six.
I know. I have a number, that's a different number than
That staff report or the, uh, attendee write.
Oh, there's two numbers there.
Yeah, hold on. Let me look up the last page of.
Maybe that's just supposed to be thirty-nine and then Sorocco was six ninety-one. Near it was one point five.
Yeah, it is the, um, the Sutton's goal has it should be five seventy-five.
It should be, yeah.
That's on the scope. Um, yeah, sorry. So, um, anyway, uh, I put the other responses, um, in terms of cost, we had one other one that was very similar in, um, in pricing, it was just slightly lower or start slightly higher. And then that was Sorocco and, um, they were all responsive, um, it's just he was a little bit. So, um, we would recommend awarding the contract. In addition, we got costs associated with inspections and, um, construction management, any additional engineering that was required and materials testing. So the project total would be seven seventy-nine five seventy-five. And, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget included a six hundred thousand dollar, um, commitment, a hundred thousand coming from expansion funds and five hundred thousand coming from sewer capital. So we would recommend pulling that difference from the sewer capital fund and, uh, moving forward with awarding the contract, putting our POs together and moving forward with the project.
So do our engineers believe that the project can be completed for that price of six thirty-nine?
Yeah.
What was our engineer's assessment? Do you recall?
I don't remember the exact dollar amount, I'd have to go back to the RFP, but it was within, yeah, it was close. So it made him feel a lot better that he could receive two, uh, proposals that were very similar.
So, so Chris, are there any contingencies out in, in this country? Do we need any contingencies in the contract like rock or anything, or is it you're fairly confident that it's a, it's a straightforward project?
Straightforward project. The, the biggest concern we're going to have is that basically, uh, bypassing the sewer, but they, they've addressed all that and their bids.
Does this
Looks like it's pretty straight.
Does this contractor have experience with live bypassing of waste?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and we're confident that they're res- responsive and responsible?
Yes, absolutely.
I believe they did another
We worked with Sutton on many projects, um, they, they did all our straight field upgrades and, and they did a, they did a fabulous job out there. Um, we've also had them do some smaller projects for just like emergency response. And they've always been, these are the worst, they've been, they've been
And on those contracts, there wasn't like large overages, they, they came in pretty much where they said they were. Okay, any public comment? Did it address, uh, Rebecca, did it, did they address when they would possibly start?
Um, so we, uh, we're going to get through this process to get to our bill, do the contract, um. We just had a conversation. Were you involved? Yes, at our project meeting last week, were we thinking May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a hundred and eighty-day contract?
Mm-hmm. It's a, it's a quick, quick, yeah.
Yeah.
And Booster Way will be closed for that entire time, or is there work around?
There's some, it will be closed for a portion of it, but, uh, it's just going to be bridge section, so you know, UWPA will be accessible coming in the back way, you know, it's, it's not going to block anybody off from getting to where
Any other question? No, thank you for including the other members in this.
Yeah, that helps.
Yeah.
Perspective, it does, it does. I make a motion to approve awarding contract.
One second.
Shemente.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Hernan.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
May I, may we take a short break before we move on to
The big ones?
The big one?
Yeah, let's do that, let's take a, a five-minute break, Sam, till All right, so welcome back. We are now finalizing our regular agenda with item H. This is discussion and direction on the various updates to the capital improvement plan. Rebecca.
Okay, so, um, we have been, uh, actively working for quite some time with our city engineer, specifically on water, wastewater, um, capital improvement, um, program. We need that for the, um, municipal service review for LAPCO and we also need it for a spare influence information for LAPCO. Need it for a rate study, um, getting people moving for a budget. So the last, uh, CIP that was done was, uh, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five. It based the CIP information off of the twenty twelve and twenty thirteen water and wastewater infrastructure. So obviously, those are a little updated. So in talking to our city engineer, he said, we really need to update the, um, the model for the water and we need to, um, up through the wastewater master plan because just things have changed in the last, you know, so many years, ten years. So, um, just kind of going through this, I, I just wanted to list off, you know, completed projects that we've done or that are currently underway because we've done quite, quite a bit. Um, and you can tell how many times we're coming to council and giving reports or doing updates on projects or doing an RFP or supplying for grants. So it's, it's pretty significant. And all of these projects, um, you know, were either in the CIP or they were contemplated because a grant was accessed or Caltrans came along with the shop project or Caltrans came along with the grant, whatever it was. So our CIP is divided in four programs and so we've got public facilities, transportation, wastewater and water. And so public facilities really has to do with our public buildings, um, you know, parks, museums, um, and, uh, you know, the general city facilities. And really, for the most part, you kind of think of those, all the general funded, um, activities. Uh, there's not, there's not a lot of, um, if we can find a grant, um, then obviously we'll, we'll try to identify grants. So similar to like the slate circle lighting, if we can find a grant, offset some of that, that's what we're going to try to do. We went after the community resilience grant, we didn't get it, but, um, those are things that we try to identify because um, there's just not sufficient general fund to really do everything that we need to do. Um, we completed a space needs assessment in twenty fifteen. And while the locations are all the same, um, the staffing levels have changed and the community needs have also changed. And, um, a lot has happened in terms of how people work and what the community is expecting from twenty fifteen to today. So that is something that we would recommend doing an updated, uh, space needs link. So, um, in the original, uh, space needs assessment in twenty fifteen, uh, the fire station, council chamber, city hall and police station, those were all prioritized as number one and then, um, the, and city hall, current location, the city hall higher location, um, visitor center museum, Utica Park, um, was second. And Utica Park moved up to a higher priority, obviously, because we received, um, three plus million dollars in grant funding. Uh, the parking lots that we had, but we added two additional potential parking lot, um, areas. One was added last year in twenty twenty-three, that was the Napa, um, property next to Napa, the Napa building. And then the one that we are officially totally in escrow and just, um, releasing the, uh, the final piece of our due diligence, um, I had, I talked to environmental health just to make sure. Uh, there used to be a gas station down there, as many of you might be aware. So, um, as long as we weren't going to build the, uh, uh, children's playgrounds or a daycare center, we're, we're going to go. Um, and then we've got the Altaville School, the Gateway Park, Triumph Park, um, we have the Sandwichway Building, which, um, I'm not going to pull down building, but that's ours. Um, and then we have, uh, acquired that new section, um, along Finnegan, um, for the Angel Creek Trail. Um, the parks, uh, police and fire, they all have development impact fees, but we'll say, and, um, this was also pointed out by our building inspector and building official that those are relatively low compared to other jurisdictions that they've worked with. Um, and so we may want to contemplate, uh, looking at those. The Utica Park, as I said, has been the main focus because that's where all this grant funding came in, so we're, we're working on that. And, um, and like I said, most of the revenue sources for this entire facilities program is typically the general fund. And if we can, uh, utilize impact fees or grants. On transportation, um, we work very, very closely with the council of governments. We have a very close relationship with Caltrans. Um, so we're always trying to look at different ways that we can fund our road systems. We do get gas tax, um, but as we have identified, as more people are driving EV vehicles, uh, they are using less gas, less taxes, less money coming in for, uh, road maintenance.
I wonder if anybody ever thought about that as they're pushing for that?
No.
I wouldn't think so. I was, that was an interesting comment that was made in this.
Yeah, so
Weight of the vehicle on the roads.
And yeah, so it's heavier, heavier vehicles, um, and it's, so it's, it's, uh, yeah, so there's whole, whole, uh, whole days of conversations, uh, that cities and counties are going to, to specifically talk about this subject in terms of, well, how do we, how do we fund our road systems now? Um, so the good news is there was a pavement assessment that was done in twenty nineteen. Um, and we talked a little about, about this, I think maybe like the last night or one before, that we received the report, but we didn't really receive a layer of information. So you'd have to go through, physically go through the report to look at it. So, um, we have this sign replacement project that's going on. And, you know, I think that it's beneficial to actually do a, um, uh, inventory of all of your infrastructure. And that is vitally important because if you're ever in, uh, in a major catastrophic, um, where, you know, fire burns through, nothing gets replaced under FEMA unless you have proof that you had it and where it was.
Yeah.
And you're able to And so we work really hard to get iWork up to, up to speed. So we were able to identify a vendor that works, um, through iWork. They came up, they geotagged every single sign, they geotagged every single road segment that we have. We have a, a snapshot of each road segment all the way through and also what it looked like, uh, four years ago, so we can kind of toggle back and forth. And then they did an assessment and a, um, remaining service life for each one and a rating and a recommended treatment. And so with that information, and they're just finalizing the data right now, in iWork, we can do a couple of things. We can, um, say we have a, we have a hundred thousand dollars that we can spend on road maintenance. Um, I, we've worked with our city engineer, Aaron Bruce Torrey, who's on our civil engineer side, and he's helped us identify the cost per square yard for various treatments. And then we can plug in, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, um, for, for this next year and the system will go and grab the roads based on what, what should be replaced um, and what money we have. And so it could be crack sealing, it could be micro slurry, it could be, you know, whatever it is. And so we can go that way or we can identify particular road segments. So if you said, um, and this, this, you see this kind of happen in, in different ways in different jurisdictions, I'm getting a lot of calls from my, my constituents about X, Y and Z roads, right? So then that becomes the priority. So it really depends and so we will put, put some recommendations together in different ways using the data that we've gotten. And then we'll bring that forward. Um, and then Aaron is helping us kind of come up with a more comprehensive pavement management, pavement maintenance system and approach, um, that we just really haven't had here. So we're kind of excited because we're, we're actually going to start seeing, um, something that we can work with and, uh, best utilize the, the limited dollars that we have. Um, the unfortunate part with pavement management, and Jen, I'm sure you know this as well, you put your money on your best roads. You don't put money on your worst roads, um, because the worst roads, you're never going to have money to do it. So we would have to find grant funding for truly filled roads, uh, because they would cost, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
That's why it has a real
Dollars, yes.
When they have a road that has damage and potholes and it's hard to drive and they see the effort being put on a, on a decent road, they have a really hard time understanding that you preserve or you maintain what you have, so it doesn't get to the point of, of so far gone, so to speak.
It's, it's preservation. And so, um, with the limited dollars that we have, it really is about preservation. And, um, we will continue to try to identify grant funding where we can and get creative where we can. Um, but that, we have to start somewhere. So if we can try to keep the roads that we have that are in, uh, fair condition, um, and maybe a couple that are still in good condition, then, um, that, that's where we'll have to go. So we will bring that information so you can see a map of where we would recommend, um, in what years. And so, uh, what the system does for us is it tells us what our pavement, um, remaining service site, life is. And so most of our roads are in that, um, six-year range, which is not good. Um, and we have, you know, one, like, small percentage that are in a twenty-year. So, um, as we can start actually adding maintenance treatments to these, we can start adding useful life to these and stop losing useful life on them. Um, let's see, um, we also, as part of the transportation, we don't have a local, uh, traffic circulation plan. Um, and so that's been something that Amy and I have been lucky enough that we really do need. That traffic circulation plan can help us identify grant funding, um, for our local roads as well. Um, but we need that plan. So we have been in conversation with the council of governments, looking at if they have the potential, um, steady, uh, dollars that they might be able to um steady uh dollars that they might be able to recommend. Um, and if that if that is something that they can do, then that will be something that will go before the um COG board. Um. The uh what else? Um, we have uh done quite a bit uh out of the um CIP plan, like I said, and a lot of projects are happening um that are really going to fundamentally help um many elements of the plans that we did have um associated with the Caltrans shop project. So the complete streets with the um the bicycle pedestrian, uh the mobility project, um we're working forward on the Finnegan Lane, you know, um encroachment access. Those were all elements that have been in those plans and we're finally starting to be able to check those boxes off. Um, the main street plan, which we really consider historic, hurt that we haven't been able to do much with thus far. Most of the North Angels Plan is what the Complete Streets was. There's a little bit for the um the Main Street Plan, so I'd say the the um sidewalks in front of Utica, but that's about where it ends. So um the Main Street Plan is also one that we would recommend getting updated. Because again, if we have an updated plan, it makes it easier for us to be able to get um potential grant funding. And all of downtown Angels is still Caltrans Road. So if we can identify safety issues, um you know, things that they could contemplate in future shop projects, then we've got the plan that we can coordinate with them on that as well. Um, so again, this is a conversation I've had with COG. If they have any planning dollars that they might be able to help us to update the Main Street Plan. We wouldn't recommend completely rewriting it, but there's elements we would want to update. So for instance, Utica Park, the work that we're doing, Utica Park and the trails in there. Um, and uh, you know, we're gonna, we've added uh property purchases associated with the old Napa building and the property next to the Napa and then the um parking area downtown. So there's some elements that we've added that we want to contemplate in there. Um, and then also the fact that we've adopted a historic registry locally and we're working towards um kind of looking at it more from a state and federal perspective as well. Um, so that's in terms of transportation. So wastewater and water are the two kind of two biggies. So for the um for the wastewater, um what is not included in the in the um worksheets down below is Booster Way, but that's because it's part of, we're starting it now. So it's part of this year's fiscal um year budget. It'll carry over to next year and we will contemplate the entire cost of that um that Booster Way project. And then um we had been adding INI projects as an annual outlay. And so those, many of those will be taken care of through these bigger wastewater projects. Um, but what we would do is on a case-by-case basis through CCTV analysis, we basically need to camera all of our all of our lines. And that should be done probably every five years and it hasn't been been done in that amount of time. So we would do that and then our current budget consumes about seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Um, and then it would just be, you know, certain failures that we would identify through the camera and we would put problems together um and 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 get those taken care of. But for wastewater, um we have uh listed down here, um we've got two two sheets. So you've got the first sheet, which is twenty twenty-four through twenty-twenty-eight. So that's that five-year period. And then we have the second five-year, which is twenty-twenty-nine to twenty-thirty-three. And the reason we want to look at it from a tighter perspective is there are long-range planning things that we need to contemplate. And so we want to make sure we don't lose sight of those should we have a development um that, you know, comes to the table or we find a grant opportunity, we've identified that it is a need, but it's a long-term need. If for some reason uh, you know, a a big development comes forward that is going to initiate a need for something that would have been in that second five-year period, we'd have to have that conversation with you as council. But some of these are development um driven and some of these are um uh maintenance, you know, capital maintenance driven. So um and Chris can speak to, he can give you all the nitty-gritties in terms of why each one of these is necessary. Um, if you want to, you know, have any of that information. But a lot of these are the same projects that were on our prior CIP, but they've been updated with construction costs. And those construction costs were carryover from a twenty-twelve or a twenty-thirteen cost. They weren't updated on an annual basis.
So these costs are still updated, okay.
Are they prioritized with respect to the 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 way the projects are listed or?
Or numbered, yeah.
They're.
Numbered.
So basically, this this five years, this this twenty-four to twenty-eight is is what needs to be contemplated in this next five-year cycle.
So the most, so if you look at wastewater collection systems, the first one is Valacita Road Sewer Rehab Project. That's the number one project in that category, or if he had funding, he would do something else?
That particular project's already pretty much been done.
Okay.
Part of what's called is that, I believe they call it East Room.
Okay.
Um.
It's environmental.
It's all, yeah, it's all pretty much done. It's in the it's in the works to get that.
Okay.
The Booster Way project was part of that. We just pulled it out because that has to get done before the half.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. And some of these are like the Main Street Sewer Replacement Project. That has been on every annual budget CIP um that that we can find. It just hasn't happened. And part of the problem is the idea of digging up downtown Main Street
Yeah.
is nauseating. And so um we've had many, many conversations about how, what's the best way to do that? And um it's not just the sewer, there's the water line too. So we all had an epiphany one day and said, if we're gonna dig up the sewer, we may as well do the water at the same time, get it done and move on.
Does it run right down the middle?
No, so the sewer runs on call it the east side of Main Street and the water runs on the on the off.
Oh, opposite.
So. But.
That makes sense, yeah.
There's all those in there and we may end up relocating each of those and and.
Right, just ditching them and doing them, yeah.
So.
Yeah. What about sidewalk?
Uh, they're not.
They're in the roadways.
Sidewalks are not in the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, sidewalks are a big issue.
Can you put sewer and water in the same trench with a layer of dirt in between or anything?
There's a lot of separation, um but I I don't.
Same, yeah, because if the breaks on the bottom, you have to go through the top to get to the bottom, that makes sense.
That sounds horrible.
Separation, you could do side by side.
Yep, and and then we have uh we experienced some pretty significant um INI issues in the last, the winter storms for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. And um what we identified is we have some manholes that are just below grade. And so when it storms a lot, they just get covered up with water. And so they were just sucking stormwater in, that's all they were doing. And so we were, that water was coming into the treatment plant.
Right, right.
Uh, and so that's just, that just can't happen. So the uh Murphy's Grade Road Sewer Rehabilitation Project, part of that is raising the manholes. And so what we kind of came up with when we talked about everything, whether it was on the wastewater side or the water side, is what are things that are causing capacity issues? Either in the field, on the um collections or distribution side, or on the treatment side. And for the most part, our treatment facilities are, they have lots of capacity. They don't have lots of capacity if you have an INI problem, because then we run out of capacity. So in that pers- in that in that respect, we need to get that that stormwater issue, the INI issue dealt with. And so this needs to be the biggest culprit of that. So we're confident that through that project, we would be able to eliminate not all of the INI, but a pretty significant portion of the INI. And you know, what what we kind of all talked about is we all want to see, you know, right-sized growth and development, but um the last thing we want to have happen is not think about these things, have a developer come to us and then us say, I'm so sorry, we can't uh we can't connect you. Um, Habitat was the only reason we were able to do Habitat is because we um we've we've committed to doing that Booster Project. So we we need to just make sure we invest in um in in deferred maintenance issues um or or re-replantation issues or uh realignment issues that are positive for the field, so that's what we start.
On that Murphy's Grade Road one, um it's not in the new section that that's just all done and is it low below the high school?
It's, we call it the China Gulch area, but it kind of runs.
The manholes being under grade are in the field directly across from my school.
Oh, gotcha, okay. It's not in the road.
It's not.
Gotcha.
But there will be.
But it's, so it's all just kind of going in there from that field.
It does and it 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 really does some very strange things in there. We just need to straighten that all out and get it moving through there a little better and then get those manholes above grade. And then the next section will be actually past the football field going down the China Gulch behind um like the museum down through there. That section will lose some attention.
So um so when you look at a ca- an overall cost of eight, almost eight point nine million dollars over a five-year period, if you want to joke a little bit, but we'll get to that in a second. So on the water side, um we, you know, really wanted to address regulatory concerns, um approving reliability, replacing Asian infrastructure and making sure same thing, that we're not cutting off capacity. So um kind of same thing, we're, the AMR project is not in the schedule below because we're starting the AMR project right now, so we would contemplate um that if we can.
Meter reading.
Hmm?
Okay. From this.
Yep.
Meter.
The meters.
Yep.
Um.
I remember the meaning.
Uh, but uh the really unfortunate part is uh we we, you know, we have gone through a multi-year project on the on the um the the backwash on the water treatment plant project. I think it started in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. Um, and then the the funding gets pulled. So um that was a real gut gut check there. So um I I did receive word back from Senator Alvarado Gill. They they received our um our proposal to to get that funded. We're going through all of the proposals that they received. They can't really commit to anything. They might have an idea, maybe sometime in August, maybe not till the end of this year. So the answer is not no, but I won't know.
This is earmark money?
This was earmark money. Um, so uh she is going to be of the uh, she is one of the people that I'm meeting with um this this week. So I might just drop a little a little dapper bit about us. Um, but that uh backwash handling improvements, um we've got a um transmission uh main replacement project, Murphy's Grade Road Transmission Main Upgrade. I mean, some of these things you kind of look at and you're like, why did we do it that way? And I think we ask those questions among ourselves quite quite frequently, but I think it comes down to, at the time, it was a cost-saving measure, but now it's kind of biting us. So when you look at like the Murphy's Grade Main Line, it comes out of the out of the plant at what size?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, and it necks down to what size when it gets down there?
Uh, by the time it gets to the end of the grade, it's down to six.
Oh, wow.
Cool.
Oh, wow.
That wasn't good future planning. Um, so now we need to contemplate how do we get it back up to twelve? And so um but that is causing a capacity issue.
So may I ask a question? So Chris, can you just leave that transside pipe alone and not touch it? And then kind of.
Typically what we do is there was AC pipes. Once we abandon it, we leave it in the ground.
You leave it in the ground?
Then we have to go through the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So you can just.
You can abandon it.
Perfect.
Leave it, we leave it in the ground.
Okay.
Um, now, uh when you look at all those projects, um some of these, again, would be related to development. Some of them are just related to the fact that we've got some cleanup to do. And we will continue, as always, to try to identify grant funding. But on the water side, in a five-year period, that's eighteen point two seven million dollars. So what we are working with the um the rate consultant on is to look at debt. And so there are lots of um debt opportunities um through USDA um in in different facets that we would look at. And we would identify which which projects do we think we could get grant funding for and continue to just keep keep at it? Which ones we think are import, like so important, we just gotta, we gotta get them done and we would debt service them? And which ones, let me just pay as we go? So that will all be folded into the draft rate studies that you guys can look at and contemplate. But with all of it, it really still com- communication to the rate consultant is um we want to do all this and not increase rates. So um we'll have to see what what this all comes back with. But we we couldn't get to this point until the engineer, you know, had had um team meetings with Chris and we'd have conversations with planning and um looking at the different master plans and different different modeling that needed to happen and then an understanding of where we're going from here.
So at some point, we will see um a chart or a graph showing what we can pay on an ongoing basis, what what we can afford. We have a pot of dollars, correct? And that pot of dollars is going to be divided into paying as we go, paying off um COPs, certificates of participation, um and you know, that financing part, correct? So that we can, as a as a council, say, uh, you know, our our current rates generate this much, this this many dollars. We can maximize those dollars by borrowing some and using those funds to pay the loan over a twenty-year period. We can use those funds to pay a project upfront.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Yep. And then there's ones that were just, we know that there's there's grants that will pay for them, it's just we have to just keep, we have to get the plans updated. We have to get them prepared, we have to, some of the grants require feasibility study. So some of the things, we just have to align ourselves so we're in a better position to to be um uh more up to getting those grants. Um, and so we just, we haven't, we haven't been there. Um, so a lot of it's just been fairly reactive. Um, and again, if if I can get, like, if I could get the the water treatment plant, I mean, that's a shade seven million dollar lump, that total number.
And so when it, when a developer comes in, they're responsible for their, the infrastructure and their development out to their sidewalk or something, correct? Then we come in and hook in, or can we put them on the hook for anything, any other upgrades that are needed?
You can put them on hook for some of it if it's your requirement, it's something that you need done to make that development happen.
Yeah.
So.
We have to have the capacity.
Right, so take, have it got, there's some water lines that we're gonna have to add in to be able to serve.
For them to connect too, right?
What's that?
For them to connect too, we have to have.
Yes, so basically to, for them to get the flow that they need, we're gonna have to add that new water. And.
Yeah, from where?
Uh, it'll be from the old Central Highway by tractor supply. And we're gonna have to run it up to hell, so. Um, yeah, the, you know, obviously they they paid for that, but we, you know, once it's in and it's been.
It's ours.
Then it's ours.
It's ours, right.
It's ours.
Yeah, so they install it.
They they install it, we do the inspection for all of it. It's our engineers that are looking at everything. We're making sure it it conforms to our standards and our system and then. And then they, they be the, it's their contractor that will put it in, um, but we do the inspections for it. And then once it's completed, we take ownership over it, we need to. You'll also see sometimes, and this was the piece in Greenhorn Creek, is they put in um, infrastructure and they had to pay for that infrastructure and you work out a um, uh, reimbursement agreement.
Reimbursement agreement.
So if what they're putting in is adding capa, like adding more connections, then as those parcels connect by, by end of the system, it pays the developer back.
Right.
So that can happen um, with Habitat. Uh, they pay, they, they pay for the full infrastructure for putting that water line in. And we won't, and we will, we will basically trade what they would have to pay for connection fees per unit equal to their um, that it pencils out. It was gonna cost um, you know, a million dollars for the connection fees. Their uh, water uh, line infrastructure is gonna cost a million dollars. So um, there's different ways that you can do it, but if, if it's like a whole new line that's gonna go in, then that developer would have to, we'd have to work out an agreement for who's paying for that infrastructure. Because it's ultimately one hundred percent on the front end benefiting that developer. And um, and s- and so if it's going to add where more people, more people within the city would, would, we'd have a benefit of, of that addition, then we can do a reimbursement agreement with them.
On future grants, like uh, like the state grant that they took back, had we already started the project and were mid-project, they would have taken the rest of the money back, or we would have been okay?
Oh, if they would have funded it, right?
Right, that's what I'm asking. So like, I mean, lesson learned, right? So we got a big grant and we should use it, you know, don't sit on it for five years or whatever it was.
Yeah, so the, the problem with that grant is um, when I came in, it was a, okay, where is everything? Where are we at with everything? Where's the projects? There was a lot of just stale stuff going on. And so I think that project hadn't been touched in a year when I came in.
Oh, I think it was more than that.
For, for the pro, for the prior engine, for the prior engineer, there's been nothing really going on. And so it was trying to pull everybody back to the table. And you know, we can kind of Monday, what is that, Monday morning, quarter of the day?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, until the cows come home. But yeah, I mean, I.
And I just feel like a lesson learned from that.
Earlier.
Right, and we're gonna be going after grant money, we should also be ready to move.
It should be a shovel-ready project.
It should be a shovel-ready project, they write, yeah. Because that's really unfortunate. I mean, it, it won't be the same thing with earmark money, that's a little different. But um, but when we're going after grants on some of this stuff, we have to move on that. I mean, that's really, that just was terrible.
Yep. And so um, you know, where, wherever we have projects going on right now, we are just, we're just pushing on it as hard as we can. Um, for some of the grant, potential grant funding that we still have out there, we're ready to go, like environmental's done, design's done, like we're ready to go. We're just waiting on, you know.
The right grant.
We're waiting on Caloes, we're waiting on, you know, the funding agent to get through their, their process. On Angels Creek Trail is waiting on the cultural. Um, but we're finally in a position where we're not the bottleneck.
That's good.
But um, yeah. So uh, yes, uh, to answer your question, like you will see all of that information and get all that information in terms of what, you know, what it would look like. And I will say probably even with the last rate study, um, and I wasn't part of that, but it really does look like decisions were made to not include certain um, projects in that rate study just because it, you can't afford, it's a, it's affordability.
Sure.
And that twenty nineteen rate study was a pretty significant increase. And so um, you know, there, there were things that were in the master plan that weren't included in that rate study, and I think it really came down to um, just, just affordability. So we're gonna take a little bit different approach where we're gonna contemplate debt service um, going through this, this next one, um, and really with the prioritization of no, no wherever we're, we're hit with on capacity, um, because we have undersized our infrastructure, that's where we wanna go after.
You know, I know we all live in glass houses, but the hardest thing with the next rate study is people are gonna have to put as you do with the money. You know, and what can we say we've done with the money from the last, you know, I mean,
Yeah.
that we have to be able to publicly demonstrate that, you know, we've done X, Y, and Z and, yeah.
So we will have a booster way is definitely something that, that we, that we will be able to check off. Um, we have had costs associated with the water treatment plant because there has been design and um, and engineering done on that one. Um, we have had a, a lot of P and E even on um, well, in, in, in environmental on uh, like East Trunk and Valacita Road. So there's elements that we have done, but construction. And so the good news is those dollars that are still there can go towards taking pretty significant bites of what's here and then um, align with any new funding that we would get from the, the, the rates uh, in order to move forward on the rest of the projects. But that's what I got. And so um, what we would like to do is include the twenty-four to twenty-eight water wastewater CIP projects inclusive of the AMR and the INI, you know, projects, which what kind of pay, pay as we go kind of things. I do have an updated engineer's estimate on the total AMR if we were to build out and contract out because that was a recommendation at the last meeting, if we could just fully go out. So we'll, we'll include that as well. And then when you guys are looking, see, well, what does that do to the rate company? And you might say, okay, well, we wanna do a hundred thousand dollar contract year until they're done. I don't know.
And you save eighty thousand dollars in people, in labor because you're not reading meters.
Yeah.
And we have other things, yeah.
Yeah, so that will be for that, you know, conversation. But my recommendation would be um, for purposes of the rate study um, to include the twenty-four through twenty-eight capital projects for water and wastewater. Um, so we can get that draft going for you guys.
That's the eighteen million.
It's the two, it's the water and the wastewater. So there's the eighteen point two and then there's the eight point. Eight point six.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't mean, that's aggressive, that's aggressive. I mean, that's, that's aggressive financially, but it's aggressive timeline that, and we haven't produced that much in ten years, let alone five, looking forward.
Yeah. But like, we know, like, if, if, if B M came forward tomorrow and said, okay, we're, we're appreciating that, um, we've got three.
Ready to go.
Three million dollars, right there.
Right, just, just by appreciating, that doesn't mean we're moving forward. But it's identifying. But it's identifying, yeah, things are prior, these are priorities, but we're not getting them done. And it's a plan, it's a plan.
And, and it's a plan.
They get kicked down the road.
That's, yeah. And we know, like on the Murphy's Grade Road project, we got it, we got, to me, that is a huge issue because we gotta get those, at the very least, we have to get those manholes up before we have a major storm again. That, that was a, that was a killer.
So when you get this manholes up, it, it, did all that water's just gonna run into the creek stand and, and do that and not into, not into your plant?
It won't go into the plant.
Okay, okay.
Can you just extend those pipes? I mean, how hard is it?
Can't put rings on it and then.
Yeah, can't we just add like a cement, you know?
And then you have a little bump in the road, right? That's our speed bumps down Gardner Lane.
And there's, there's more to it than just the manholes. It's a way they route the sewer line.
Oh, okay.
Just creates a real weird bottleneck in there, but it just needs to be given out to them correctly.
Yeah, and then some of these projects, um, by taking care of them, we are eliminating all of the additional staff time we're spending on the sewer purveyors that are happening out there. Um, which is a, is a real problem. We see it on the water side and on the wastewater side. So um, when, when you see the guys out there, um, we could probably pinpoint a project that's really the tool.
And, and Chris, you can't blind align that pipe, can you? In some.
Well, you could in some.
But it just, it, it, yeah, but the capacity has diminished then.
It is. Uh, well, it's just, it depends on the tree. We could pipe bursting and drag a new pipe in behind it. Um, but really in, in that situation, there's, there's no reason why you shouldn't escalate.
And just do it again?
Yeah. But you typically, you usually align pipe bursting in situations where you're on there or something like that. Careful what you ask for.
Yeah, we wanted this CIP deep down. Yeah, be careful what you ask for.
Well, you know, I, I, I think, like you said earlier, we've learned some lessons. You know, now we know that we need to hold our engineers' toes to the fire so that we have shovel-ready plans. And we're not sitting behind the eight ball because whatever. Um, and, and I think just the identification and the sharing of the identification, and this is what we're choosing to do, I think is great PR, you know? Obviously, there's what, twenty-six million dollars worth of projects or whatever it is? But at least we've identified and we prioritized and we have a plan.
Yeah.
Instead of saying, duh, I don't know what we're gonna do. So I, thank you for sharing this. It's amazing. It's amazing with, well, you know, and we're dealing with prevailing wage too.
Yeah, right.
You know, so our dollar's never gonna go as far as someone else's dollar, you know, in the private sector, which is, I understand it, but it's still sad.
How many years of deferred, is this deferred maintenance been? Um, how many years do you think is combined here?
Oh, I would say it's, it's twenty thirty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. People have been kicking this down, this hand down the road.
And it's typical for every agency. No one wants to deal with INI because you're tearing up rope, you're, you're tearing up property. You're, I mean, and it's, it's a heavy lift, but the days of growing capacity in the plant, on that extra INI, those days are over. State's no longer gonna fund growth of a plant just because you don't wanna take care of your INI. So you gotta, you gotta keep that in mind. I mean, it, it's time. I, I mean, it just means that we need to prepare it and it, and it hasn't been, it's been working for a lot of years.
So do we have any public comment on this, other than what we've already, do we send people online?
Nate, Nate, okay.
So Nate.
All right, well, this has been informative, so I'd like to thank staff for that and see what we can do, keep it going forward. Um, moving on to item ten, administrative report, this is Rebecca.
Um, so I am uh, heading out tomorrow to uh, California League of Cities. And so I will be in Sacramento for the rest of the week. Um, like I said, I will um, it's, I'm scheduled to meet um, with uh, Senator Alvarado Gill and um, go over some of those talking points. Um, met with Doug Oliver this morning. Um, we have, we're not experiencing it as bad as we were experiencing it, um, but we, we still have some growing things where the county is intaking city permits. Um, and so they've, and, and, anyway, so what, what he's working on is their tracket system. So he said that they've figured out how to, he said it wasn't working up to two weeks ago, but now it's working. So they have updated their uh, their layers in the tracket system that now it, it identifies the city limits. And all the other um, county water sewer purveyors were in there uh, in that discussion as well. And I recommended that, I don't think it's actually the city limits or the district limits. It's actually the sphere of influence for each one of us. That's the layer that needs to be in there. And so um, that's what they're gonna be working on. So he's uh, going to be working on getting the, the shape files from LACO um, and getting that, and then hopefully that will resolve some of the uh, pain points that we've been having. Um, let's see, uh, I've sent out the uh, fair uh, sign-in sheet. Um, and that was just based on who was interested as well, if he would like to sit at, we're, we're gonna have a table. We're sharing a table with uh, Utica, Union, CCWD, and us, just as kind of an informational table. Um, and then whoever happens to be there, obviously no focus on, you know, our agency, but there will be other information there as well. So they've got a sign-in sheet, um, if you're of interest in doing that. Somebody sent it to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not, not that I want you to create more work or create more work for you, but could you do talking point? I mean, I, my only concern is I wanna go duh, 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 duh.
I mean, we're gonna, there's, I'll have, I'll have, yeah, I'll have to.
Okay.
Um, if you could send me the link too.
Okay.
I mean, and you said in your email that we could split the shift too.
Yes, so how it's, how it's, it's, it's.
Ten to four or something.
Four or four to ten, but you guys can split up the ships and go four and four or whatever, just coordinate with someone. Then Claire has also been adamant that they want someone there until ten o'clock at night.
Till they close the building.
And um.
I think we just wanna make sure kids don't go in and mess it up.
And, and so I, I, I've talked to some people and either, even people that will have tables in there or either, and they, the lighting's really bad, like late at night, to try to get out of there. If the concert's going on, nobody's going through the buildings anymore.
No.
Um, so I think we're kind of committing until like eight o'clock, not ten o'clock. Um, right, so I will send that to you.
Drink down, Lush and Derby, and then once.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, um, let's see, um, we are getting our Angels Creek Trail team back together again, so I feel like that's one of those where I've really had enough time getting a firm understanding of where we're at, who's on first and what's on second. So we have a whole new team on that. Um, it's still going through cultural uh, uh, through uh, the Department of Transportation, so there's not really anything I can do with that. But we are now working um, with a new project manager. Um, so we're gonna get a, a firm timeline from him, so I'll be able to share more pertinent information with you on that. So that made me feel better. And um, let's see, we're continuing um, through our GIS journey. Um, so that I, I work will have um, current updated information, including Lee and Use mapping information. So we're working through that. Michelle uh, is finishing the last pieces of the ClearGov, so we will be doing this year's budget in ClearGov. She did the training this morning, so it's, it's, we've gone through various, I think the first year I was here, we used Smartsheet because it was better than nothing. Then we went to SharePoint, which was better than uh, Smartsheet, but um, it's still has limitations. And now um, now we finally have this software and it's about as easy as you can get. So we're all really excited for that. Michelle's worked really hard on that. And um, I think that is, I have to, I mean, yeah. Um, oh, the only other thing is just so everybody's aware, the Mark Twain stop signs and crosswax, that conversation um, was had with the principal that we would wait until school was out. And so that's, that's what the, that's what the delay is. Um, they, they kind of all decided it didn't make a lot of sense to try to do a bunch of outreach and then move people and then school's out, so anyway, so they're gonna do that, um, then. And then I think, I think that's it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And item eleven is council report. We're gonna start with Mike. We're gonna start with Mike.
Okay, I, I have three. Amy, are you still there?
No.
Oh, Amy, laugh, darn it. Um, well, I had the pleasure of sitting in the old, all hazards meeting today, and it was about stormwater and drainage plans. And, um, I'm understanding now that this consultant was tasked with completing certain things, and one of the things that Amy recommended regarding, um, the stormwater drainage plan is that, um, that, that when a contractor comes in or homeowner comes in and is gonna mess with the drainage, they need to do a pre and post study, uh, to show that there's gonna be no impact to the drainage, which kinda makes sense to me. Um, and then Amy is gonna provide more direction regarding setbacks because that was also, when I read, um, the information shared, I looked at our creek and you start thinking about setbacks and how are those things built? I mean, so she's gonna help with, with that definition. Um, and then, uh, May fourteenth is the next meeting, and it's emergency response, but it's gonna be with city personnel and it's gonna be in-house folks, so that's gonna be good because they're the best folks to help update that up. I also had the pleasure with Alvin, um, to attend the council of governments, which is always a fun thing, and, um, there were two items on the agenda that are probably of interest to us. First was something we discussed at our last council meeting regarding the Angels Creek Trail and loaning those funds to the, to the Valley Springs Project, so that is gonna happen. And then next thing was a minute order, uh, approving revised regional surface transportation program, RSTP, um, and we were gonna take those funds and ship them to the Wagon Trail Project because the completion, and I know that, um, Alvin had spoken with you about that, I mean, that completion of the Wagon Trail Project really benefits us because those people, folks coming to our city were the first place where they go, and so it seemed like a good use of those funds. So that, uh, and then the transit part is May twenty-fourth, or May twenty-twenty-four is try transit month in Calaveras County, ride free on every bus all month. So that was pretty interesting. Uh, I don't know if I'm a real fan of, uh, EVs or not, but they're getting an, an electric van. And she went on to state that the, um, mechanic has to have special training, wear special, well, you probably already heard that, and it was, and special underwear and clothes and gloves because he could get, or she could get electrocuted, so it's, it's so wonderful.
All the things he's mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, and then the last thing is I'm gonna be attending the CPPA meeting tomorrow, and I just wanna share three items with you. Um, first of all, uh, we were able to reestablish, no, we, that, because we dropped rates and there was about a six hundred thousand dollar savings this year, we were able to reestablish the rate stabilization fund at three million dollars, so that's been restored. The, the proposed budget next year, uh, is, is a balanced budget, and we're looking at about a ten to twenty percent decrease in rates for next year. So our per kilowatt that dropped mid-year looks like it's even a drop further.
Okay.
So if you guys, if you guys are okay with that, I will move forward and, and support that. And then the last thing is, uh, of interest is that they are going to, um, appoint an auditor, and there were three, and the one I'd like to see CPPA go with is Jolie. He currently does Utica, um, he does five local agencies, UPUD, Utica, and some other ones in our area. He's at a, that, that company's at a fixed rate, the other two companies are at an hourly rate.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you don't, um, I, and because he's, he understands our area, my assumption is, uh, and it's a, a three-year deal and it's eighteen thousand dollars, so, um, if you guys are okay with that, I would support, uh, that firm doing the audit for the CPPA. And so they're talking, Michelle, that secondary rates could be fourteen cents a kilowatt and primary could be twelve cents. So, um, you know, and I said it last time, but you know, if we're attending a meeting prior, uh, I mean, if we're attending a meeting after our council meeting, I just like sharing this stuff and making sure you guys are all on board so that there's, there are no surprises, uh, but Mike just being a renegade and voting the way he wants to vote, so, um, yeah, I just think, I just think that this is a, it's a, it's a, a fair deal, it's a good deal, and, uh, it's good to see. Who knows where, you know, Western's gonna end up and where the rates and, and PG and things like that, but, you know, at least you're seeing now a continuation of rates kinda stabilizing a little bit, and that's gonna be good. Michelle's got her calculator out there, she's calculating.
Well, just as an example, I, we were looking at the, yeah, we were looking at the Diego four, um, is it the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
Was like seventeen thousand dollars or almost eighteen thousand dollars for the month.
The nine.
But you think a ten to twenty percent decrease on that?
It's substantial.
For months. Um, oh, I just have one more thing. Uh, Chris is going to be presenting to the IR.
IR.
RMA. Thank you. Um, we apply for the AMR, um, project to them, and so he's doing a presentation advocating that we've run to that project. Is that clear capacity?
Knock it out of the park.
He's doing that.
I'm so glad I don't go to that meeting anymore. You're so much better at it.
Yeah.
Um, but you know what, I, I, the only thing I will add, you know, I, I appreciated attending COG, but it's almost like a foreign language when you attend. And the folks were nice and they're, you know, and they enjoyed my asking the million questions.
You did not. You did not ask a million questions.
And I didn't, I didn't, yes.
Nine hundred and ninety-nine. But it's about an hour.
Yeah, um, but, you know, I just, they're so, I mean, I was so glad to have Alvin, you know, there, I could, he'd nod and I go, okay, I, I get this, but, uh, just like you say, I mean, there was so much, so many, I mean, when Cal, I'm gonna stop here after this, but when Caltrans did their report, it was all acronyms and I, I sat there and I thought, what the heck are you talking about? Holy manders.
What is the, what is the COGS, uh, transportation plan for Fair? Did they open up Sunday? Remember last?
No, it's just the Saturday.
They're not doing Sunday. No, huh? Wasn't there appetite last year kind of, it was too late that they didn't get it out there or something?
Um, they don't get, uh, yeah, we were trying to.
But they get stuck, at least because of Derby.
Yes, and they can't make the rounds.
They get stuck, they can't make the rounds, and then people, it, it ends up being extremely low rider show.
Yeah, it is, it's, there's a whole bunch of.
It would help so much with the parking issue that we.
Maybe in the mornings, but.
But I think a lot of people drive themselves with all their stuff and all that.
Yeah, because it took a.
Yeah, because you're hauling all your stuff in and then they just got stuck in that traffic and they couldn't make the stops on time, and then they just, it just got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is free in May and Saturday, they will have Saturday.
They'll have it, okay, thank you. Okay, Caroline, you're up.
I have, uh, not been attending anything. Thank you for, um, going to all my staff for the last two weeks, I appreciate it. No, I've got a budget meeting for Utica on Thursday. I just got all the information a couple hours before this meeting, so I don't have a lot to, um, to talk about. I did look in here and he does have four ninety for each of us, each agency. This is twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm not gonna speak anymore because I, I have not been able to do a deep dive on this yet, so.
And everybody was telling me you had them as well, so that's the new thing now.
On the budget? Great, so y'all have it.
Yeah.
So if you have any input for, uh, Jennifer and I, or I, like, let us know, or no, I'm going, not you.
Yeah, I don't go to budget.
If you have, uh, any input, um, let me know before Thursday at, I don't know what time.
One, I believe.
Something like that.
Um, and, uh, I will be able to call in.
Okay.
Um, because the session on Thursdays.
Yeah, I was supposed to be at Lega Cities, but with this budget meeting and then I had to have a, a last-minute dental thing, um, tomorrow evening, so a kitten again.
Okay.
You have the dental issue.
I attended.
Oh, you have one of those?
I attended the grand opening for the quarry on Thursday, uh, and then just as a reminder, there's quite a few grand openings, which is great. There's one this Friday for Veronica Matilde, there's one next Friday for Amalay Kayak Rentals, and then there's also the After Hours Business Mixer next Wednesday out at Quarry Hall Center. Um, and then, yeah, between now and our next meeting, I will be at COG, and I think that's also the night of the Frog, uh, Frog Jump Kickoff.
It is the Frog Jump Kickoff, so you and I'll be, I'll be, I'll be at COG also.
What do you think?
The first, May first.
And it's at five thirty.
And I don't think, I don't think, I don't think I'll be at the next council meeting either, by the way, I just looked at my calendar and I, I know, but it's the last one for the rest of the year. So, that's it. Yeah, I just, I'm gonna, I have to be at an event, uh.
May I just say one more?
Yeah.
I, I, I attended the grand opening of Johnny the Label. And, um, I just so appreciate every time we have a new business open up because it just helps every other business in town. And, uh, unfortunately, my Cal's weren't cooperating or I would have been at the quarry. Um, but, um, I, you know, they're just so much fun and, and, you know, Aptar and that, they do such a nice job of welcoming the, the new businesses and, and helping folks, um, just kinda get started. So it was, it's good, it really is good. I, I enjoy those.
Okay, and my computer just crashed, I don't know what it's doing. Um, my calendar, I have no report. Um, I've attended some of the grand openings and stuff. I do have the Fair kickoff coming up, and we have Whiskerino coming up next weekend. If anybody wants to attend Whiskerino, that is the kickoff to Fair and it's the Fair's number one fundraiser. So if you need tickets, and then we have signage and things like that, um, available. Um, but that's all I have. So moving on to calendar, it looks like Rose does have the calendar up in front of us.
So, um, COG impact has been canceled, which is usually Rebecca sits on the Lega Conference. Rebecca stated she's going to that. Um, and then we have the special meeting for council at one o'clock. Lunch will be provided, so if you wanna come a little earlier to grab something.
Like, like twelve-thirty-ish or?
Yeah.
I have a meeting that buzzes up to one, so I will probably.
Which is not a problem.
Just eat during the meeting.
Yeah, you can do that too, because we're going to, so we will be reviewing the council handbook and then you will be going into closed session after.
Okay.
So, um, this finance budget policy needs to come off because we are changing that, um, and that we will be bringing to a future meeting to.
So we're not, we don't have the finance budget meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Didn't we just get the agenda for that?
That's for the.
That's for Utica, sorry, I'm.
Yeah.
Forget it.
I thought you had. Um, uh, UWPA is on the thirtieth at five thirty, and then we're into May, so COG on the first and then council meeting on the seventh. I will not be here on the seventh as well, uh, so Michelle will be getting that actual packet together and running the meeting, so. Well, that's it for now.
I don't have to go to all hands, it's all done.
Oh, infrastructure, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta.
So finance is coming off, I can take it off my.
Correct, because you guys wanted it quarterly now, second hour before each meeting.
Okay.
So each one is going for.
When is the next infrastructure and facilities?
We, those are quarterly as well.
Okay.
So the decision was to move them to part of the full council meeting.
It starts a half hour early or so, like.
An hour.
An hour early.
I like that, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't here for that, but I like.
Okay, um, we have another item calendar, which should, I think it should be correspondence, the letter of support that we have.
So we're just asking if you guys are.
Yeah, everybody have eyes on that, if you have any reason to not support that, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so moving forward for future agenda items, does anybody have any recommendations for future agenda items?
I have two and I'm probably gonna get kicked, uh, for my second one. My first one is I just like an update on Gardner Lane. You know, we talked about, are we gonna add additional signage or traffic? How are we gonna kinda slow those folks down moving through there? My second one, you guys can all kick. I, I'd like to talk about chickens.
I have that on my list.
I actually have that on my list too.
Thank you, because I, I wasn't a part of that and, and I'm not gonna.
Even if I was a part of it, there was so much going on in, in those things that, um, I'm glad that it came up because I wasn't aware of the severity of that, so.
Well, and, and how many people do we know that, yeah, so I just think it'd be good to revisit that.
So specifically animals or, or, because I think I was pulling it up, it's hoofed animals and things like that, or are we just wanting poultry?
It's non-hoofed.
Non-hoofed.
So non, non, how it's described, the definition is non-hoofed.
Okay. Let's talk about.
Non-hoofed animals, please. Well, it doesn't really, I love that, but it's right.
I didn't know.
Foul.
Foul.
So it's non, non-hoofed, so it could be chickens, ducks, rabbits.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about non-hoofed animals.
Actually, I would like to have an understanding of, of livestock, I think, like.
It looks like seventeen point six five, right?
Yeah, so the definition and the limits is in the definite, it's in the definition.
Seventeen oh, oh nine definition. Seventeen oh nine definition is, is where it breaks it down, so, yeah, I think that's start somewhere because.
I think getting.
Yeah, my mind's going about earlier and about what changed.
I mean, I have them, but I think I'm in a, like, for that, I've got an eight years.
Not guilty.
Yeah, that was my request for a future agenda. Do you have any future agenda items?
No.
I bet it's just the chickens.
That one, right. Okay, so the good news is we're done with our regular agenda, we're gonna go back into closed session.
And that was it for future agenda?
Yeah, chickens, chickens, chickens.